This meeting is ordered, the Phillipsburg Town Council Work Session, January 16th, 2018, 7:00 at Phillipsburg Town Hall. Council members present, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Ritchie, Mayor Reddish, Councilman Sunstrom, and Councilman Odrick. Our Assistant Clerk Cherry Cotten is here, and our Public Works Director John Buchanis is also here. Ed Brunswald is in attendance, and President Chris Cooney. So, let's get down to business here. We make no decisions tonight except those that are listed below. Number one being the meeting minutes, which we do not have at this time, so we'll set that aside and go directly to the bills payable, which is a short two-page document here. So I would ask the council to look over that and comments or questions on it.
Why are we paying so much for the phone?
I was off most of December, and at some point there might have been a bill that came, there might not have been, but I wasn't here to regulate it or tell if it was, came or not came. And so apparently the November bill, which we received in December, didn't get paid.
Okay. So it's two statements here?
Right.
Okay.
Now, that being said, if you'll notice, the library is only about $9 and some odd cents.
Right.
This is actually kind of cool. Apparently Blackfoot has a program where with all schools and libraries, they give them one month free per year just to thank them for their community service. So for that particular one, we actually got a month free.
So, the 317.75 and the 5.3327, those two together?
Are two months.
Are two months?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
November and December?
Uh, November.
My thing says November, January.
It is November and January.
Pardon?
So it is November and January. So, the, no, their statement says November, it gets paid in December, that particular bill. Januaries we're paying right now. Decembers didn't get done because I wasn't here. I can only assume, or we just didn't get the bills.
Okay.
May I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Do you have to pay like the same base rate to Blackfoot? I do like $56 a month.
I can pull a bill and what?
I'm just curious, because I think it's, plus taxes and fees, I think ridiculously expensive.
So, um, well, we have bundled, a bundled thing because we have broadband, but here it says monthly charges for this particular one, 71.95.
I would just, I know the budget cycle's passed, but I'll throw this out there. I am now using Verizon cellphones and saving a ton of money compared to what Blackfoot charges a business for a telephone line.
And then the library's 52.90. It's all varies.
I pay a base rate of 56 bucks a month, plus long distance after so many minutes, plus all the taxes and fees.
Well, it's something for us to look into.
Okay. This elec, the 1,109 dollars of our regular water testing, is that average? I mean, is that where we, do we pay a grand amount?
Yeah, it's probably, it's probably a grand amount.
That's kind of what I was saying.
That's water and sewer.
Right.
And there, there are some, Mayor, that, that's probably increased a little bit because of the year-end cycle. We have synthetic organic compounds and SOCs and VOCs.
Okay.
Balls organic compounds and, and all of that, that litany of, of chemicals that they, that they search.
Right, and that's, I, you know, I realize we have to do this, there's no way around it, obviously, but that doesn't include the shipping either, because it's just a collab bill, right?
Yeah, that's too, that's too Markham.
Right.
Well, on this particular one, that's just water.
Right here, you have water, water.
And I've actually started, I've recently asked Markham to start labeling their bills because they used to just send them to us and I'd have to get hold of John and say, I don't know what these abbreviations mean.
Right.
You know, is this sewer, is this water? And so now they put on there for me if it's a water testing or sewer testing.
The Pioneer Technical Services, just an engineering, they charge you us $5,700?
That, that is, that's reflective of the Cedar Street Engineering.
So it was just engineering, engineering looking at it?
Yeah, and I don't think that's a closed case yet.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments from the council?
Are we going to follow up with the suggestion for Verizon plans?
Yeah, it's definitely worth a hit, Chris.
How's your service downtown? I've got two bars in here. It works?
I don't, I have Verizon and I don't have service in here. I can text.
Yeah, I don't get, mine go voice mail in here if somebody called. Got to step outside to, whatever happened with the T-Mobile in the tower? Anybody know? You know, they came and approached the council, we approved it, then put the tower in, and I haven't heard, that's been nine months ago.
Yeah, it's pretty site-specific in here too, because I can get it out here and not back.
Yeah, oh yeah.
So.
That way all over town. Same way in the museum.
Do I have a motion on the floor to accept the?
I'll make the motion.
Bill call?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First on our topic of discussion is One Hough Park Stage. I went to the Rotary Meeting last Thursday, listened to where they were at. Meeting was an hour, and then I stayed an extra hour with their stage committee and participated in that conversation also. They had some preliminary designs worked up. It doesn't sound like it, that they're going to go with that. They were discussing possibly putting a storage facility underneath it. Doesn't look like they're going to do that either, but I made it clear to them that they need to approach us when they get something nailed down in terms of a design so that we can sign off on it. The, the footprint is exactly the same as the stage they had, which I believe is 24 by 32. That will remain the same. I also indicated to them that pursuant to Ordinance 7-6-1, that we're, we're going to need a licensed and bonded contractor to do the building on this stage and also the foundation. Before, when they built the warming hut, it was in private hands. They did what they were going to do, but because it is in fact town property, we need to have them use contractors that are bonded and licensed. I also indicated to them that I would be requesting a speci, a specific resolution from the council okaying the stage so that it goes into the record, assuming that we're going to agree to this thing, and that way in the future someone can look and see, well, when did they do this and how did they do it, which to my knowledge didn't happen before. That I'm going to start going to these meetings so that I can keep abreast of what they're doing in terms of planning. They also indicated that they did have $75,000 for maintenance and long-term projects at the facility, but we mainly concentrated on the stage, so that's where that's at right now, if anyone has any questions or comments.
You didn't say anything to them about the existing building?
I'm sorry, did?
The existing building at the park in regards to what was brought up by the audience last time about insulation and pros and cons.
You know, I didn't use that as an example, but I did indicate to them that they would need professional bonded contractors to do it. No homage burned reason here. And that's, and so I guess with that, I was, I was indicating that it has to be done right, essentially. I, I, it doesn't do me a lot of good to dig back into the past with respect to that, the way that should have been done, or people who have had it too.
Yeah, right.
They could have participated in that. But I did indicate to them that addressing that, what you're talking about, I think, would be remedied with a professional builder in there, I hope, so.
John, just to kind of give you an update on that, there is insulation in that, in that ceiling.
There is.
There is blown-in insulation in that.
Is it adequate, or?
Four inches.
Because, height is quite.
I think maybe her, her comments were more about the Zamboni, where they installed kind of an afterthought water line to that, there's a, there's a utility sink there, and I don't, I don't think that was properly insulated, the line itself is not properly insulated, thinking that they were, we were always going to have heat in that building, which is true, except when the heat goes out, you know, if we lose a thermal couple or we lose a fan or lose some part of that heating system, that will freeze.
That makes sense, yes.
That will freeze. So, so that remedy is precise.
Here, give me one of them, there's ten of them.
And, uh, that building was pretty much built with help from Rotary and was pretty much done by Wally Stango.
It was a good building?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
He's doing the, he's doing the hand of construction, he's now in gravel.
Wally?
Mm-hmm.
What's the last name?
Stango.
I don't know who it was.
He was a coach and he was shop teacher at my school.
There is a, there was an assumption that, that there would be town help on this, much like we did when we demolished the deck over there, like the crew came in and we, and we were able to build them. We, we itemized the time and the materials that we spent, we being the town. So, I meant, their assumption is that with respect to rerouting the road, that town will play a role in that since it's our street, since we, and I don't know what that's going to involve necessarily.
Probably not a full lot, but.
Right, and I, I will get with our attorney also and make sure that there's nothing we're missing in terms of these.
Did they say, Daniel, did they say anything about digging foundation?
That, yeah, there, you see, there, I was a little surprised because they're still sort of in the planning stages, and I don't, and point of fact, they were talking about perhaps reconditioning the old stage, replacing it there, which frankly, in terms of me addressing the council there, I would rather see them build a new one if they're going to do that. Because I suppose you could retro that thing back and make it look nice, but I also would indicate to you that if you're going to go find money for this, it's a lot more likely that you would get more money if you say you're building something human, beautiful, as opposed to better big something. That would be my guess.
I've never heard any discussion about that prior to, you saying that.
Well, that, this is a conversation, that this is a conversation that they're having, and my, my gut is telling me from listening to it go back and forth that that's more likely not to happen, but it is on the table discussion-wise. So, all of this means that they haven't totally decided what they're going to do, other than the, other than the square foot footprint of the building, historic world stage, if you will. And they also talked about other uses, what's going to happen with wear and tear and weatherization and that whole sort of thing. So they got a little bit of work to do before they get to that point, and I know they're, they're raring to go and everything, but this is the nature of the public-private partnership, it just doesn't happen overnight, and they're fine with it. And I'm going to keep up with them on this particular issue, so. Anyone have any comments or questions?
No.
Okay. Tom Park Trail.
Hi, everybody.
We have Ed here, he's going to give you the updates. Ed had a conversation on the A.
This is two pages from the back. I'm kind of in the weeds about this, guys, so I'll try to stay big, big picture and then you can ask me questions, but we wrote that, we wrote, uh, we worked with the council a year ago, came up with this plan to do this trail. It's going to be a license from DNRC, they put the trail out on the DNRC property. We were about ready to submit a grant to the state for RTP funds who, state, to federal parks, or state parks, for 72 grand, and they said it would fit better if you split it. So we split the project into two, and we received $35,000 grant, 745 last year. Rotary Club is providing matching funds, as is the Hospital Foundation, the Grant Account Medical Foundation. We were getting bids for Phase One, after we got, we got approval from the grant for the first part in May, I think, April or May, and about the time we were getting bids, the fire season broke out and suddenly we had a fire camp all over the construction area, so we kind of stopped progress this last year. But, so Phase One is we've got three quotes for construction and materials for that. We've got quotes coming in for materials for two kiosks from Woodland Creations and from Hogan's and Hall. I've spoken to Mr. Bloom, who said that his shop crew is very interested in building five park benches for us to be installed on the trails. Spoken to the Natural History Center in Missoula, and they're, they've given us ideas about how to, or who to talk to about designing some informational things out on the trail about either, you know, to work with a school here, and they come up with ideas of things to put out on the trail for information for birds, flowers, plants, grasses, whatever. So, that's it, so Phase One is kind of ready to go. Phase Two, from the back, we are days away from submitting Part Two of the grant, and that has to be by the end of the month. I've got that mostly ready to go, we're looking for a few more letters of support.
I, I will provide a letter of support from the mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. And so I don't, hopefully, I mean, I'd like to see us get them both done this summer. If we can't get bids and everything together, we can do this, you've got a couple of years to get, to use these grant monies, but it would be nice to get it all completed in one year if we can. I'm not going to, I don't think it's in our interest at this point to, well, maybe, but combine, but we have to go back out to bid and do a formal bid process. So Phase One, we split the materials and delivery into one quote, and then the actual construction in another quote, and that is, both of those are below 25,000, which means we could ask local reputable contractors for quotes instead of putting an ad in the Missoulian or the Beet Standard. Phase Two, we can also do that, I believe, but if we tried to combine them into one, we'd have to do the formal bid process and start all over again, and I think it'd be kind of nicest to get going on it, and frankly, it's a little tough to get interest in, in video. So my, my thought is that I've got three, three quotes, and I was going to take it to the Parks Advisory Board, which is meeting on the 22nd, I believe.
27th, I believe it is. Did they tell you that, that was what I had written?
No, but after I talked to you, I've got it on as a 22nd, I'll, the next, I'll be here, whichever one it is.
All right, and I'll double check that tomorrow.
And then have them review quotes and bids and ideas, and then make a recommendation to you guys, does that sound appropriate?
Yes, excuse me, Ed, it is, I, I have it right here, it is, you're correct, it is Monday.
Wait a second.
It's Monday, it's Monday coming up.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, questions, anybody?
Not being involved that much with the project, is it a walking trail and a bike trail?
Yes.
What are the, did, did the Rotary Club and the Hospital Foundation give you a figure?
Yeah, Rotary has committed up to $10,000.
Outstanding.
And so, though, for Phase One, we would use $4,000 of their money, $1,000 of the foundation's money, because we're going to do a prescriptive trail program on this where the distances are marked out. Phase One's very flat, it's got a finer grade material on it, it's almost, oh, it's like a mix of sand and stuff, it'll pack very firm, so you can roll a stroller, wheelchair, small kid's bike very easily instead of being hard gravel. Phase Two, well, I'm going to put it before the Parks Board, I'd kind of like to see that done with local materials from one of the two local pits in, in the valley. They couldn't supply anything finer than three-quarter minus for the other part, which is kind of rough for, for pushing strollers and wheelchairs, that kind of thing. But I think Phase Two, it's, it's a mile long, we could probably do that with three-quarter minus or five.
So, how this works is, you get the money from the donations, you had to figure a 4,000 and a 1,000, you spend that, and then that gets reimbursed. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think she just said that what she want to do is, we get a bill for, from some kind of work or whatever, we submit it to the state showing that we have used up in a spreadsheet form 20% of our matching funds along with, with town funds, but you guys agreed to be the bank sort of for a couple of weeks. You submit the thing, and then they reimburse the amount of grant money, and it's a pretty quick turnaround.
Okay, just like, like we do on our projects. Yeah. Any questions, considerations, concerns?
Just a couple of questions. Ed, the, the route that's shown here on your, is there, is this like an engineered and surveyed, it's all done, and it's been spent on a budget?
Yeah.
Not yet. Okay. The only thing I would throw out is especially for this Phase One, would be just, rather than a random trail through the playground, would be to adjacent the parking lot area, whether the trail's on the, get my directions right, south side or north side, would be co-locate that route adjacent the log barriers that are there, so that it's more of a sidewalk, perhaps a small grass boulevard between the trail and the log barriers for the parking. That's just kind of my only observation, is don't necessarily route it at random through the playground.
Where, where's the, where's the playground you're discussing?
Well, if we've got the toys here, you've got the sliding stuff here.
Right.
But rather than just kind of taking off and going through the field, would be, so the trail could also be utilized as the equivalent of a sidewalk.
I think it can be right now, and the reason we went down below the road a ways is because it's quite a slope, there's about five feet of drop from the parking lot.
Oh, is there?
Right off the bank, so it'd be, pretty, a lot of work to either haul in, yards and yards of fill, or, yeah, so we're running toe to slope is where we're going, that's why the line is there.
Gotcha.
Yep, and this will wind out through here, and we'd like to make it about a half-mile loop and, so that the cross-country team, when we link it in with a mile loop, the cross-country team will have a safe place to practice and, and we wanted to link it for BDA kind of accessibility to the, to the restrooms, and then over to the Ridgeview Trailhead, which is right here, it goes across and up.
So Ed will have somebody that maintains it for cross-country skiing?
For cross-country skiing?
Yeah.
I'd love to.
Well, I just think it'd be kind of cool, you know, the winter time.
It'd be kind of like keeping ice on the rink. Yeah, it's a little, it's a little tough, but.
Well, I mean, as far as, you know, maybe somebody that plows it so that, you know, I mean, I don't know a lot about cross-country skiing because I don't do it, but.
Well, I do grooming up the Dekalay for the Dekalay Trail Association.
Yeah, I'm just curious if that's something that's even feasible.
That's something we could look at in the future, but.
It'd just be kind of cool.
Yeah, would be cool. If we had no snow coverage, and then you got to find money to invest in, and then we'll, and then we'll be able to pull it.
Yeah.
But that's, I don't know.
And, and you and I have talked several times about this, but what I see, you know, as long as we maintain the drainage and the flow, this being certainly higher than, than down here, that we, we have drainage across the pathway, you know, especially here.
Yes, yeah.
In other words, I, I don't want to see us creating a dam with this, with this, with a new trail. And I'm sure you've thought of that, and, and contractor will be aware of that.
Total mileage is a mile and a half?
Yeah.
Okay.
Plus a little bit with the connector trails and stuff, but they're about.
I think you've got an extra job.
Two of the quotes I've got are from paving contractors, actually, they would excavate a few inches down, and then roll it, compact it, and then bring in a paver, just like you see my asphalt with, except dump the sand in the paver, and they can put a crown in it as needed, and there's no grading required afterwards, and then they compact it afterwards again, so that, you know, they, I don't know if that's the cheapest bid or not yet, we'll see how it goes.
Does, do you have to have an engineer do this?
No.
Okay. Okay, and I'll, I'll talk to you in the near term, Will, as you start to bring some stuff into order, and I'll convey everything to the council.
Correct.
And I, you know, obviously as the spring gets, we get toward the spring, we'll start to ramp the spring up, and whatever you need to do in terms of you speaking with the folks who have also committed Rotary and, and so forth, so just let me know what's going on and that, thank you.
Just, I, I think, I think, Ed, too, that the equipment that we're talking about, these will all be relatively smooth.
Yes.
Smooth arcs, so you won't have, you won't have the rigid, and the rigid corners you'll have, because a machine could do that, but it's a lot more work.
You said if you can turn a pickup truck and keep all four wheels on, if that's about the radius they can turn, they can't be super tight, but, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for your hard work.
Okay, um, next on our list here for discussion is the Intercap and CIP update. Couple of different things going on here. I want to schedule a meeting one week from today, single issue, voting on this Intercap loan that we've discussed at length. All the paperwork's done, we just need the okay from the council. I, I'd like to do it before the next meeting so that we can get the process rolling in advance here before February, at least get the paperwork underway. So, we'll, we'll schedule a meeting for next Tuesday at 6:00, it'll take 10 minutes, single Our grant writer had a conversation, I, I came in afterward with the DEQ concerning the fact that with respect to the sewer lagoon and the updating of all that and all the tasks that we need to do, and how it relates to the Intercap loan, we are in a position now, I guess I'm getting ahead here, there's a sewer and water main policy here, it's not necessarily related, we'll just talk about it now. Essentially what's going on here is we, we're, we're restricted about doing any kind of advanced work beyond some of the flow monitoring devices and so forth, and some of those tasks we had talked about earlier, because of the ammonia study. The ammonia, the ammonia study will be done in March, that mixing zone will be put together by the state, they're going to handle all that in March. Also, the DEQ indicated that they would be, they, they would become a player in the optimization study. They're willing to put money and time into, into helping us do that optimization study, and they're shooting for July on that, which is a good sign, if they want to put in some resources into that, that's great. That was a new, new bit of information. And also, because of the ammonia study, I indicated to our grant writer that she need to be very specific about asking the engineer and also DEQ how that affects our permitting process, which is, which will be up in 2,000, right? And DEQ preliminarily indicated that they'll fix that because it's their holdup with the ammonia study. So I anticipate that being pushed out based on that, which is a good, that's a good piece of information for us. And that was just, we just had that conversation last week with them, and so they're being pretty realistic about that, and that's good because they haven't had a choice, so that's where that's at. Let's see, so, what's going to happen here is in the near term, we're going to look at these upgrading the flow measuring devices and prepping for the leak study, and I'd like to indicate right here, all of this, whatever, wherever we end up going with this is going to be based on what happens with that leak study. It's, that's a huge, huge deal, and if it indicates we don't have, if we have nominal leakage or no leakage, that's wonderful, that's the best news we could get. If there's a fair amount of leakage out of here, then it's going to turn it into a much more complicated circumstances. So right now, we can't do anything because of the weather, but in the early spring, we'll be set to go, and we'll, it'll start with that leak, leak study, that'll be the first thing that happens on-site, plus figuring out these new flow measuring devices and so One other suggestion that, that Ms. McIntyre made, because we're, we can't get into the 2018 grant cycle with TSEF and RRLG because of the ammonia study, and of course this is addressing wastewater, we could still go after money in the 2018 grant cycle for the Fred Bird line through TSEF and RRLG. And she, I, I had a conversation with her about it, and she said that she thought that was a good idea. And that would be the scenario where we would, in the next six weeks, where we would have to really get after it in earnest and put together the application processes and some kind of plan, and then go after money for the Fred Bird line. We've been talking about doing it, our Public Works Director has worked up some preliminary figures and so forth about certain places that we need to do, and so I would just like to put this on the floor for discussion in terms of, does this council want to pursue money for the Fred Bird line in 2008 grant, excuse me, 2018 grant cycle? Which is RRLG and TSEF in particular.
What was your preliminary figures for the line?
Well, I, I kind of broke it down, Carl, into, into sequences, or a sequence of events, and we did the clearing this last fall.
Right.
And I just got a quote on pipe the other day, it was like $14 a foot. And I just got a quote on pipe the other day. It was like fourteen dollars a foot for a thousand feet, you know, it's, and it was, that's fourteen thousand dollars. And it was our hope to get it up there while we still have snow on the ground. You know, to be able to traverse some of the rougher terrain. And, yeah, I mean, we're, we're still in a preliminary look at what all of this is going to cost. But the pipe alone would be about fourteen thousand.
And your crew would do it and so on?
Well, it depends. It depends how TCEP looks at that. You know, they, it is a line replacement, but it's their money. And I don't know, Daniel, that's something we'll have to ask Tracy about that, if we've got to put that out to bid or just why.
Are we losing water off the existing line? I mean, or not? So that's okay?
Yeah, it's okay for, for now. But the upper power plant is not running because of that. We don't want to charge that line. We have to charge that line with 300 PSI in order to run that upper power plant. The line won't take it. It's just too old.
So the upper power plant provides money to the town?
It does.
And how much would that be ballpark?
Well, I would guess it's probably twelve or fourteen thousand a year. And I don't know where, where our relationship is with the school and what rates are, if they've adjusted. I'm not necessarily part of it.
Well, I think a little further exploration about how bound we are to certain regulations for the expenditure of the money, I would say go ahead and do it. I mean, if that ever breaks, this town is without water. And without water, we have massive problems.
She, this individual, Tracy McIntyre, when we had conversations in the past, the Fred Bird, we're talking mainly about sewage and sewer water and that part of it. But through these conversations, the water comes up all the time. And Mr. Lukovich and council members reference the Fred Bird line. So that clicks in her mind and she's attached to these grant cycles and thinking, well, if we can't do the sewage part, let's go after this. You folks indicated to me that it was a priority. And so that was our last conversation. She said, do you, you want me to pursue this? We started to put something together. I said, well, we'll talk to the council. I, my attitude is, yeah, let's go for it. At least the preliminary, let's get some more information and find out what the, what, what we have to do, what requirements for, what are the matching possibilities or, and that whole sort of thing. So I would suggest that we, go ahead.
It, it makes sense, considering that we have taken the leap to get it going this last year.
Right.
We've got the momentum going, we might as well just tackle it while we have the opportunity to get the funding.
I, I will have a conversation with her before the end of the week.
And Mayor Daniel, I'll just reiterate what I mentioned to you and that I've said several times about that water line can also be considered as a can stock.
Right.
For the power, you know, for, for the power plant. And it may fall under renewable resource plans.
Renewable under key grants and, yeah, which is another thing that...
Bring that up to her, maybe that, there may be a, you know, avenue to, to pursue funds that way.
There, there, yeah. In fact, I'll inquire if there is, there could be a whole level of federal stuff with...
I think there are probably going to be some for Homeland Security.
And then that's another, that's another federal one, yeah.
Domestic water line and a flu for agro generation. I'm sure that there's, Homeland Security's got something to do with it.
Okay.
It'll all be good wherever it comes from.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because Carl, you are right. I mean, you know, the, the, we, we sit and live on pins and needles in this community with, with the condition of that water main.
Yep.
We just have to stay with it is my best.
Okay. Next on the agenda in here is a conversation about town purchasing policy. And, and basically in a nutshell, we have had conversations in the past about town personnel, be it the, be it the crew, be it the public works director, be it the mayor and so forth. What are the boundaries for purchases that are made independent of asking permission, for example? We have no ceiling to my knowledge. We don't, we don't have any policy or parameters. Does, is anyone aware of any, anywhere that we have? So I'm going to open the floor to the conversation here about what, because I, I believe that we probably should have, no, no, there's no probably about it. We should have a policy reflecting the amounts of money that are made for purchases and how that might be addressed in terms of permission, be it from the mayor and/or the council itself. So I'm open to the floor for the discussion on that.
Do you have any limits, John?
Well, typically, limits, not limits per se, but conversation with the mayor or with Reed, you know, regarding, you know, funds that this may come out of. If, if we need something right away, like the sanding truck needs a change and, and brake cylinders, I just get it, you know.
It's under five hundred dollars.
Yeah. And we're, we're talking about a sewer camera that's already been authorized. The purchase. So that, you know, that discussion's been, we've already had that discussion. So, you know, whether it's a matter of, I've, I've been involved with kind of different levels of this, whether it's purchase order agreements. Some companies like Hawk, USA Blue Book, they always ask if you, if you have a purchase order number. And I usually just give them my initials and my name. And that's how it comes to the, the town. But it's not, wouldn't be unheard of to have a purchase order book under the control of the mayor, that he gets a chance to look at it and/or the council gets a chance to look at it.
Well, I would assume that the underneath control of it, the treasurer more than anybody else. Because Reed would be the one that would know where, should know where the money's going. See, it's how he's got all the control, a couple of things at once.
I do definitely have a conversation with him about that.
I guess what I'm looking for here are objective ceilings. In other words, something short of a meltdown, some sort of extreme obvious emergency. Should in fact the public works director come and address a purchase with the mayor if it's in excess of five hundred dollars or in excess of a thousand dollars. Or I want to, I want to hear some numbers out here that make sense to people relative to the budget and how much you spend a month. If you spend a lot per month just to keep things rolling here, so. I mean, it's, it doesn't need to be really complicated. There just needs to be a check system, more or less.
Well, I've been involved with purchase orders in the past and I don't know that we really have to go that into that depth. If you just want the numbers, in my initial thinking, I suggest at five hundred dollars. Anything over that, it should be a consultation with the mayor. And anything beyond twenty-five hundred should be approved by the council. Now, I, I talked with prior mayors going way back twenty-five, thirty years ago. And at that time, of course, they, if they had a five hundred dollar purchase, they brought it to the council. Nothing was done without the council. Times have changed drastically in the last twenty or thirty years.
Is the public works department the biggest utilizer of funds for supplies?
I would certainly think so.
Probably so.
Well, I, you know, I don't want, my feeling is I don't want to be restrictive. And I think that, you know, two hundred dollars a month, you know, I still look on yours here for mops and PVC. I know you, you know, if we went back over to the expenditures for last year, we could get a total. So to me, two hundred dollars would be fine. The others that you build in for water testing is a given. Your software, UV program, you get into envelopes. I mean, things like, there's a difference. To me, if you would get something that I call capital equipment, where then I see the council approving that, you know, I've seen five hundred up to, anything over a thousand dollars you have to come to, to the council or the, the authority that authorizes such a, such a purchase. You know, I think two hundred dollars on these general supplies, mops, paper, pencils is fine. And that would be, the next question is, can I carry it over to the next month? And I would say the answer is no on that. I would say two hundred in capital equipment could be, what's fair, a thousand dollars? I mean, nothing's cheap.
Well, yeah, I mean, that, you know, this is a matter of comfort zone on my part. I, I, I used to have a million and a half dollar budget. You know, my own budget. And, you know, I, it's, it's a whole lot different dealing with the community and, and, you know, I, I want to be, I want to be comfortable in making those decisions and/or still, still consulting with Reed and still consulting with the mayor. I mean, I do. I mean, that would be in my comfort zone.
I, I'll just put a characterization on the floor here for discussion. Part of this resurfacing in this conversation, I think, was due to, to the, the purchase of five hundred dollars worth of Christmas lights last month. I think that piqued people's interest. That isn't something that's on our, our normal rotation for normal bills. So that's an example of something that just happens to be five hundred dollars. For something that is, is fine, that's a nice added thing, but it certainly isn't by no means a necessity. If you spent fifty bucks on it, I don't think it would be on the rate of lip as fast as five hundred dollars. So. I mean, it's our responsibility to, to make sure we follow this sort of stuff. So I think if there is a difference between the normal purchasing, like you were talking about Decal, that sort of thing, and then if, if there was something that you needed that was extraordinary or different, or wasn't in the normal monthly rotation, maybe that could be a demarcation for coming in at least.
Yeah, see, I, I just bought.
Just a, go ahead.
We, I just bought two front tires from the back of them. One of them was still a reasonably good tire, so I bought a wheel. You know, from Catatow was two hundred and fifty-six dollars. And so now we have a spare front, front tire wheel. It was just one of those things that, that happened in this.
Carl, be careful.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ed.
Well, I was just saying, when I worked for the city of Missoula, the other thing we did was if it was out of the budget, if you had a budget for twelve thousand dollars for a line X, you know, be it supplies of what for, for this, then you would, if you went over, if you divided that by twelve months, then at any month when you were going to go over that amount, you had to check in with somebody. Or if you're going to go over the amount for the whole year, I mean, maybe you buy all your supplies in June for the whole year. And if you buy, spend the twelve thousand in June, then you've got zero left. You want to spend more on supplies after that. It's got to come from somewhere. And that's where you get into troubles if you spend money you don't have. That's, that, those are the kind of, that was one thing they said, sort of a percentage of the budget, how are we looking over the whole year? And then that would give the council heads up.
Yeah, I think that's what Carl was making reference to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we were all around this. If you couldn't, you couldn't help it. We broke a back and we had to buy a new one. Now what are we going to, let's be, everybody's aware of it. And it just makes us feel there's no surprises sometimes.
I think that falls into our, our checking with Reed. You know, he's the one that has created this budget and where, where the money would come from.
I, I don't, there's things that have, that happened in the recent past that I, I think, besides the Christmas lights, that were sort of an initiator of this conversation. For example, our tractor, how much was our tractor? Do you know what the tractor cost at the end?
The Kubota?
Yeah.
That was donated to.
That was donated to that, oh, I see, okay. I thought there was a purchase of something.
Well, there was a purchase of a, of an attachment.
Oh, the mowing attachment. Is that what I'm thinking of? Okay.
The mower's, yeah.
Was that five grand?
I'd say it's pretty close to five grand.
Yeah.
And did you just buy that?
No, I didn't have anything to do with it. That was previous mayor.
Craig bought that.
Okay, so the mayor before the last mayor. And I was here, but I don't recall a conversation about that.
I don't think there was a conversation with the council.
This is the point I'm making here. This is the point I'm making here. I, I personally, I wouldn't do that. I would confer with the council. But, but there should be some sort of understanding because the next person in here might do something.
Right, need a policy.
Right. And the, the other thing I was going to say, if we, we follow through on this, it's not, we don't need a resolution. We don't need an ordinance. We just need it in the policy.
That's all, exactly.
Right, so.
And right along with that, he didn't consult with me. I wouldn't have bought that.
Right, okay. Well, that's, yeah, yeah, that's a side thing.
It is a side thing, but, but it's still, and it doesn't hurt my feelings that he didn't, but he should have had an understanding of what he was buying and he didn't.
Well, yeah, I, yeah, I mean, you should confer. Obviously, you should confer above and beyond the obvious monetary part. There should be a meeting of the minds. That's how we should do things.
And I, I had on the table here a, you know, auxiliary mower that that tractor could pull. So we're going to hopefully mow eleven feet wide this year instead of six and a half or six feet.
So anyway, I was just using that as an example of a purchase that's pretty substantial, that some individual just said, hey, get this. And that's what I want to try to avoid in the future. So. We'll work on that. Any more comments on this about pursuing it, how we want to pursue this, where we want to go? Want to change anything, add something to the policy or create a policy?
I think we should probably wait till our next meeting when we...
Our clerk is here?
Our clerk and our other council person.
Okay.
Who's highly involved in the budget process.
That is correct. Okay. Any comments?
One last. As a small business owner, and I know John has private industry experience and he brought it upon himself. It's unfortunate that the, the government review committee was so short-sighted in what they were evaluating compared to what we're facing right now. Because, you know, your, your last three topics of discussion relate to what's coming up. And for what we're going to buy is, and John mentioned it, if the, if the town doesn't, me as a small business owner, my managers and staff have permission to buy what's required to keep the business running, but it's all with a dollar limit. Exactly what the mayor just asked for. And it doesn't necessarily matter what the dollar limit is. And then there needs to be a written record of that. And I'm lucky that I get to go out and get an employee credit card for the certain managers that actually get to purchase things. And every single time they make a purchase for over a dollar, my phone goes ding and I get to see what they bought from.
Well, you were a tight ship.
I kind of love technology, okay?
You're not a tight ship.
The three cell phones we have at the business, instead of costing me fifty-six bucks a month from Blackfoot, or from Blackfoot, cost me fifteen bucks a month from Verizon.
Well, that's not even close to...
So.
Well, I can appreciate that.
Yeah, but the, that, you need to have a written policy, that I know there are town and county employees that walk into Woodland Creations and need to make a purchase in order to get the job done. That activity most certainly has to be allowed. You have got to empower your people to get the job done, okay? But then within limit, I need to know about it. And the problem is with the town of Phillipsburg, other than Mr. Bukovich within Public Works, there is no boss.
We got a boss sitting there.
And he gets paid this much for this many hours. Okay, and we're going to get to that on the next topic. But what I'm saying is you need to pick a dollar limit. Town employee can buy something up to ten bucks, but in reality, and John, you brought it up, you need to be keeping a purchase order book. When you tell Sam he can run up and buy a coupler, even if it's only four bucks, there needs to be a written record of that so you know what happened. Reed isn't just getting a bill at the end of the month. And at a certain dollar limit, you as the council and/or as the mayor from Mr. Bukovich, he needs to call you.
Well, see, this kind of go along to the subject that I was talking about a month ago.
And five hundred dollars is nothing.
Is everybody trying to remember what they bought a month ago? I mean...
A load of diesel fuel's six grand.
Right. Okay, so I think there's a, there's definitely an understanding that we, we want to pursue a policy, a black and white written policy with this. And maybe the, the levels, the five hundred dollars or whatever, maybe that's not necessarily an issue. It's more about keeping the records and having an understandable policy that is all upfront, which we don't. And also, we are somewhat hampered by the fact of where we live and if, we don't have a lot of choice about where to go, in other words. And so we have billing, a billing process that exists with Woodland Creations that's not the best setup in the world. We've been working on it and it's, it's...
But that's a purchase order book from your public works director. He's a full-time employee. Purchase order book from your full-time city staff here. It's a pain in the ass, but you've got to know what's coming in and going out. That's what makes a business go around.
And it's easy for you as being a business owner to say that, but it's hard for him being an elected mayor that may not be here next week saying that.
Well, that's, that, that's a good point.
And maintaining that.
Well, well, that's a good point, 'cause I.
And I, and seeing, well, our best interest here is for the people of the town. Do we wanna really invest two grand in a purchase order system that requires printing and booklets and, and more policy on how to direct that purchase order, how many copies do they have?
And the real, the real answer might be, maybe just make a phone call to your accountant, make a phone call to your auditor.
It may be.
You know, you're, you're not the first organization facing this particular challenge.
No, no, there's a number of other organizations in the state that are.
Right, and, and it could be your accountant will just say, boom, boom, look at, oh, I already got this printed out for you.
I would ask our assistant clerk, do you have an opinion about this?
Well, it's a problem. That's, it, it's, you know, I mean, for the most part, with most of the bills, there's no problem in balancing, there's no problem in accounting for everything, but, you know, and it's not the crew's fault, you know? There's, oh, I need a bolt, I need a screw, I need a whatever, and it just is what it is. But I've gotta be able to account for every nickel and dime and be able to post it in the right accounts, and that's where, that's where my gripe is, is, you know? I get this list to the best of their knowledge, they say, yeah, that was water and that was sewer, and, you know, for the most part, I think they do a really good job accounting, recalling everything. But there was an instance that came up where, you know, they labeled something, one thing on a receipt, and then they brought me a copy of the same receipt, but that one was labeled something different. And then that kinda set up, my antenna's like, oh, wait a minute, so how do you know for sure what you're telling me that these things were purchased for were indeed purchased for that item? But then that makes a bigger ball, because then I think, okay, so you've told me that these items go in here, and I've applied them to water or sewer, or where you think, well, maybe there's an extra thousand dollars over in streets that should have been. You know, and I don't mean to nickel and dime it, but, you know, it adds up.
No, that's a perfect example of what I'm talking about, we need to have some objective accountability of some sort, and right down to the process of giving you receipts, handing you receipts, which brings us back to the purchase.
And typically, on a lot of them, like, you know, when they go to get the Senex gas, and a lot of my accounts, like Huffman's, are not a problem. You know, but with the system that's going on with Woodland right now, where they get this great big huge long receipt, and they can't charge every time they go in there, and they can only charge once a week or once a month or whatever it may be, then to go back and recall, okay, so what did I buy two weeks ago, what was that for? You know, whereas if they go to Huffman's and they charge something, they write it right on the receipt, they go to Senex, they write it right on the receipt, but they, all these other, you know, vendors, they can actually charge every nickel and dime thing they get. So, you know, I hope that's making sense.
Well, I'll, you know, I'll volunteer, you know, look at the policy book and see what the format is, but I think, just trying to think back, is you have expendable accounts, which to me is paper towels, cups, mops, et cetera. That's fine, I would not expect, you know, you to come and ask permission for that. If you go to what I call, you know, non-expendable capital equipment, and if it's over, we had mentioned, five hundred dollars, you can't wait to get the council and mayor's approval, because we're not gonna say we're always here. But it's your call in regard to that, something breaks, you gotta have that valve fixed.
Well, and I think what I'm talking about and what we're talking about in regards to John are two different subjects.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
They really are kinda two different situations.
I, I threw that number out in the sense that if John went, he needed tires, that's five hundred bucks right there, he. All it takes is a phone call from him to say, hey, I'm buying tires, and, and everybody sleeps a little better, basically.
But her, her purchasing problem is the, is John's employees going to the lumberyard for a five dollar purchase on a credit card, and there's no, all you hear is a bill from the.
The problem is, is that charity is not allowing them to go in and charge whatever it is they need every time they go in. She said, no, I'm not gonna let you do that, you can come in at the end of the week and pay for your bill.
You're talking about receiving an individual receipt for that purchase.
Yeah, now, I don't know, the last I'd heard, you were gonna go and talk to her about, you know, is there a reason why we can't get a receipt at least, you know, for each one of these things?
Right, and I, that's.
Some kind, I mean, you don't have to necessarily say we paid for it, but, and then that way, you know, if they could bring me a receipt every time they got something, and if she wants to run a tally, great, then when she rings me that, that long receipt, all I gotta do is balance it to the receipts they'd been in, everything matches, it's fine.
I think we're talking more of a operational problem rather than a, a purchasing problem. Because these purchases are made on a daily basis.
Yes.
And they're all, they're all pre-budgeted.
Yes.
Um, and then they purchase it to perform their job.
Correct.
It's like the fire department, guy going to A-one auto and buying spark plugs or something for the engine, I mean, you, you need that, well, where does that bill for the plugs, when it comes in to be paid, does it say spark plugs on it, or does it say two plugs?
The great big long receipt does, yeah. However, I don't know, working in this office, was a spark plug used for something that pertained to water, did it pertain to, because, you know?
Yeah, that's her. That's some not, that's.
That's her deal, yeah.
Yeah, and, and obviously, because where we go is the only game in town, um, and the individual says, no, I'm not gonna run a credit card on a two dollar item, you can come get the long list of items. If they, if she would run the credit card, you would have all those individual receipts, correct? And then, and you would, you'd, you'd have that much more specific knowledge.
Yeah, and granted, when I got my credit card, it'd be able to probably be ten pages long, but that's fine, I can still balance it and account for it.
You're saying she should just give you a receipt, or give them a receipt, and then.
Something, you know, I mean, there are receipts they give you that doesn't necessarily say that you've paid for your merchandise, but shows what you're taking. You know, some kind of something. And I'm, and I'm, yeah, and I'm only saying this because, I mean, the crew's human, you know, and they get busy with a lot of stuff, and they have this project, and that project, and that project, and one day, you know, two weeks goes by, and then I'm saying, oh, what was this screw bought for, you bought two weeks ago? Well, I'm sorry, I, I would find it hard for anybody to truly remember that. Now, I have to say, they're pretty good about it. David's really good at it, you know, but, for the most part.
I wonder, Sherry, if she doesn't have an extra window on her screen that would be part of the, part of the sale, that's, and she could quiz, you know, yeah, Cam or David or Sam, what is this for? Is this for water, is this for sewer, is this for streets?
Oh, so it would print out on the receipt?
Yeah, exactly.
Boy, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, and there should be a window that she.
Should be at least a note, a place to add a note to it.
Yeah, which would, I, I think this is what Sherry's partner really is with this.
Specific, specifically about your situation, that's exactly what you're talking about, so I will go in and have a conversation with her. The first question I'll ask her is, can you do that, what you just described? Will you, will, will you do that for us, make things infinitely easier?
Oh, yeah, because then I wouldn't care if they went and paid their bill weekly, monthly, well, okay, I don't wanna go in two months, you know, without paying a bill, but you know what I mean?
Right.
But it may be an opportunity to put that information on receipt that you have in your hand.
That'd be great.
Do they have a, do they have a city smartphone?
Um, yeah, each.
They each have their own phone, right?
The crew members have smartphones, yeah.
Well, I've got some options for you, that, that doesn't work with charity, I'm gonna use an app sheet to do, to put everything in this Google spreadsheet, and you fill it out just all on your form on your phone, anyway, I, it'd be really easy.
So they would just enter every time they purchased something what it was for?
Yeah, with a couple of button clicks, and they would go into a spreadsheet that you could, a Google spreadsheet, it's pretty cool.
Could they just deviate to me then?
We track our mileage and hours and, and who's done what, which trails.
That'd be nice.
And you can, it starts with Google forms, and then you just.
All I'm asking is that things get posted to the proper accounts, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I can help you with that if you want, it's really, really easy.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll have, then we'll push word on this and get it figured out.
But then again, I don't think that the situation we're talking about in regards to me is the same situation we're talking about in regards to.
Okay. Any other comments at this point? Okay, item number five is mayor compensation.
Wait, I'm sorry, but did you come to some kind of decision on this then?
I mean. I'm gonna start writing a policy.
Oh, okay.
Just plug in some numbers, look at the format.
For purchase order possibility?
For this.
Yeah.
Might check out that app thing, too.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I, I will go have a, a preliminary discussion with the owner there at Woodland Creations and see what we can do in the meantime with respect to your situation and itemizing the purchases.
Okay.
Okay. Next item, mayor compensation. We had the preliminary discussion at our last meeting about the concept. There wasn't a whole lot of, uh, wasn't a whole lot of specific discussion beyond a few numbers and the idea that the, by and large, that the council was, had the consensus to, to perhaps move forward on this, so I'll open the floor to discussion on this particular issue.
Should be a full-time job and compensate.
Yeah. I did, I don't know if Reed sent you the thing that was in Montana, League of Cities and Towns, you got that? And the thing to remember is, yes, you're getting more than the mayor of billings, but the mayor of billings has, you know, a town manager, a city clerk, treasurer, social worker, it's got everything. But I think that, you know, I'm for, I'm just saying, be ready for why, you just became mayor, why are you asking for money now? You know, what, can we afford it, all of these negative type of things, not knowing, you know, what was involved? I had one question is, you know, Nicole and I are taking that course through MSU on municipality government. Who is going to evaluate you at the end of the probationary period?
I would assume that that would be the council that would do that.
Okay. And I think what John had said also, the job description needs to be expounded. All right, and then we need a performance evaluation to do, and setting that up, that shouldn't be that hard, based on what the essentials of the job description are, and then letting people know, you know, what is going on. I agree, it's being, you know, sitting up here for the first time and sitting where they are now in the past, is that you're, the amount of time you're devoting is really going after the problems that exist. And it's very important to swing things around in this town and looking at accountability and, you know, future direction and growth, you know, we need a growth plan. It's, in MCA, there's a lot of stuff in MCA that we have to do as a councilman, you as a mayor, you now become a focal point. And, you know, it's a critical position to be in as far as authorization and granting of permission to do something. And I, you know, my limited knowledge view is you're very detailed in keeping the record, which are needed. But, you know, I think it's a great investment, and it shows you're getting paid, you're gonna work hard, and I think, like you said, in the past, somebody says twenty thousand dollars on their own from mayor, that's good money, but you better understand you're on a six-month probationary period, and you have to live up to these standards. So it's not a, you know, trough of money to, you know, it's you.
Yeah, it's a job description, and it's a, it's a full-time job, and you do it, you manage the town. And we've never had that, we've never had it. I think it's about time we try it.
So, I had just, I thought it was a part-time job.
Well, it is.
Now, it's, but we're going to see about making it a full-time job and change the.
So, literally eight to five?
Not, not forty hours.
Well, that's full-time.
Yeah, that is full-time.
Okay, so.
I'm not too awful sure where our councilman Julian is coming from, but a full-time closer job, forty hours.
If I might. It's, it's very important, and I'm glad you brought that up, because, yeah, words matter and definitions matter. And I will tell you that for the last two and a half months, I've been logging my hours, and I'm, and I've been in here between twenty-four and thirty hours a week.
Yeah, typically, eight to nine to one-ish.
Two, yeah, so technically, um, in terms of the legal definition of full-time, I don't know that it's necessarily a full-time job, i.e. forty hours, but then there's the whole idea of, it's not an hourly job either, it's a salary position.
Right.
So, I also have been in here till one or two and spent two hours on the computer in my house, and I'm also separately logging with respect to communicating with the DEQ and a grant letter and so on and so forth. I personally wanna see a job description built, which is where Councilon Johnson's coming from, so, so there could be some objective template that describes what responsibilities are. And I don't think that it, that you need to reinvent the wheel here at all, I think that there's, that stuff is everywhere out there. It's, you can start with what the ordinance obligates, where the resolutions, what they might play in there, and then go to the policy and look at, um, what are the responsibilities? And in the past, uh, it, it's sort of been inverted here, wherein the public works director made most of this decisions, and the prior mayors deferred to the public works director. It was sort of an inverted process. Also, in the past, with respect to, um, sewer lagoon issues and water issues and infrastructure issues, the councils deferred to the engineers. So, while there wasn't maybe a need for, for a chief executive in the council to put in very many hours a, a, a month, we're not doing that anymore. We, we, we wanna X the engineers out as much as possible, because someone could say, well, twenty thousand dollars, and I can show them seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of engineering, I'm not purporting that I could do the engineering, that's not what I mean. This is liaison between the DEQ, this is making sure that our requirements are met on our end, that all the filings are done correctly, that the conversation is consistent with the regulators, all this sort of stuff was deferred to the public works director and the engineers.
Right, but my point being is that I can see the public being the public, and the way things are, you know, if it gets put in the newspaper, oh, the mayor's working a full-time job, then people come in here in the afternoon, they were like, well, he's never here in the afternoon, I thought this job was full-time, do you see where I'm going with this?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's what you call Mr. Julian there.
Yeah. No, I'm just trying to avoid, you know.
Well, my, now, having said all this, I, 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 I could put eight hours in a day in here, I, I really could.
Boy, sure.
Yeah, and if you're working at home, that's fine, too, but I just.
At this stage, and here's the other thing, too, is with respect to a salary, there's a lot of work that's gone on in the last three months here, um, just turning this thing around, and everybody who's been here knows that. And it's getting.
And I'm not by any means disputing, 'cause I know you've worked extremely hard since you've been here, I'm just trying to ward off, you know, potential.
Well, and I understand that.
Whatever's your parameter for what.
Yeah, because I, I could just foresee people are gonna go.
Job is, and then you do the job, and doing the job is a full-time job, whatever it takes to get it done.
Well, and even if it's a part, a part-time job, I don't think that, that he's, you know, been asking for an unreasonable salary personally. You know, especially for what is involved in the position, I'm just saying, just choose your words carefully, because the public are gonna grab onto it and hold on tight, you know, so, if you're gonna call it full-time, then.
It is a demanding job, and it is a time-consuming job, so I guess we figure out what.
Break down the salary into hours over a year, you qualify for full-stamped Medicaid.
Well, yeah, that's exactly right, yeah, yeah.
So you have to counter-argue with things like that, or what's a better solution that you see?
The, the figure that was out there came out to seventeen hundred dollars a month. Okay, now, you, you can, you can get Medicaid if you make under seventeen seventy-six a month, so that, like you're saying, that's a relative example of what that sum represents out in the real world. Now, I wouldn't expect to get seventeen hundred dollars a month for four hours of work, that's not what I mean at all, but, but I would suggest to you that there's, there's a bit six, five or six hours a day in here.
Oh, yeah.
Exclusive, exclusive of the time spent at all, and the time out there dealing with the public.
No, I would agree.
I'm talking strictly office hours here.
Yeah, we, weekends, I mean, I have conversations over the weekend.
That is correct.
And I have, it never.
Well, and I just wanna clarify, I'm not disputing whatever hours you may or may not work, I'm just saying.
They're determined always.
Yeah, just be clear on, you know.
So I would ask the council, what, how do you wanna proceed with this? Do you, do you see, do you envision forming a committee to, to put together a policy, a job description? Do you wanna do it as a whole, I mean, what, what's the suggestion here? It, it sounds as though everybody is in, in concert with this idea of having a objective job, job description, which obligates what the mayor is supposed to do in writing, and that way, if someone were to come in and say, what are we paying for, um, you can hand it to them, and, and that job description in terms of fulfilling it, would, will be bona fide by these evaluations that have to happen.
Yes, you gotta have a job description with critical essentials before you can write it, and a performance evaluation.
Right.
But I don't know if you get collectively, get all of us together, will we slow each other down, I don't know. You have a personnel committee, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, we do.
Seems like a logical place.
Yeah. I can, you know, you, on Montana, the cities and towns, you can call up there and they'll send you a job description.
Right.
You can go in the dictionary of occupational titles and get one. MCA, Montana code annotated, very sparse, the government study that was done was a little bit lengthier, but I had not looked at the ordinance of your responsibilities.
It's very sparse, I'll.
Spars, so, yeah, you're, you're creating a new made, which is fine.
No, no accountability for that, of course.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Young lady in the back.
Okay.
Okay. I just, because I had to leave and I wasn't quite sure if it was on the table, is this the time to vote for the position if we were gonna vote as a public person, or is it not?
Uh, it's just a public, it's a discussion, and you, you're more than welcome to give us a public comment.
So I can, I would like to give a public comment. Yes, I would greatly support you in the position of being paid for a mayorship, and I think that's a good idea. To get good work, you have to pay people to do it, so thank you, and that's my vote. And I must go.
Any other public comment?
I think-
Thank you.
Here's your right answer, Council.
Yeah, Eric, can I say something?
I'm not willing to say.
Yes.
Just, it really, after being here for three years and being part of what's going on, it really needs to be a fully managed position with somebody who is held accountable to the job. And I do believe it will help turn a corner and change things in this room.
So then here's a question, Daniel, since you've done the mayor position for a while, do you feel it's an eight-hour job?
Occasionally, I, I was in, uh, I hadn't was there, but I was doing it before thirty last week one day. Because I, 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 I think that it ebbs and flows, and I will say this also, is that I would hope that I would have an impact in, in a certain regard to make it less time-consuming and more efficient so that I could get on to other things that aren't the normal administrative, proprietary stuff that you do. I would like, i- i- I, I would like to get everything operating to the point that it's running smoothly, and then I would engage in more extracurricular stuff with respect to promotional marketing.
Because really, the person in the position is the best one to say, hey, this is how much time it's taking me, and this is what, you know, is involved, and, you know, all of us could look from outside views, but-
We are in the period of transition, and, and that transition has been the last three years, really.
Yeah.
And it'll, and it's come to critical mass in the last several months, obviously. So there's been a lot, uh, there's been a lot of cleanup work, if you will, and we're still in the process of doing that, so, anyway.
Well, I'd just say off the record, I mean, if, if you're talking about twenty thousand, that's, uh, pay-wise, that's probably fifth time for a city manager, I mean, if you have a-
It's less than ten dollars a hour.
If you have a town incorporated-
It's less than a laborer makes for cleaning the park.
There's a lot, there's a lot of things to be done for, as soon as you have a town, there's a lot of regulations, things you just have to do. And that takes time, and it takes somebody with institutional knowledge, and so of course it's following the public works director, whether appropriate or not. And Reed certainly is busy just keeping his head above water, answering the phone, paying bills, keep, you know, working the share. I mean, that's, that's, you're understaffed, clearly, and, and twenty thousand isn't too much to ask. I, off the record, I'd say way more than that is, is probably, but, you know, it's, the town's got what it's got for the budget. But, but the only other thing I wanted to say was, I would get away from the hour thing. I would just say, don't say part-time, don't say eight hours, don't say four, just, it's a salary.
That makes a lot of sense.
You're gonna write a job description, and that's what you have to get. If you hit those points, I don't care if you're into heat.
Right, there's accountability for the-
The city's running smooth, the bills are being paid, and, uh, that, that's what you're shooting for.
Right, and I, I, that's what I had imagined, but because I, of the way that I am objective type of person, I would, I would, I always wanna floor, right? I always wanna say, well, at this minimum, you know, I, I can guarantee that, that I will be in here five to six hours a day, even on a salary, minimum, sort of thing, to prevent that, uh, you know, that-
Public laugh.
It becomes, it becomes subjective in a sense that, oh, he's never here necessarily. I, I wanna prevent that. I, I, but I, I, I totally concur with what you're saying, that's what I imagine, that's, in my imagination, that's what it would be like. The salary idea, which, which Mr. Sunshin originally came up with, let's go down this route, makes perfect sense. You know, there are individuals that make an hourly wage, and then all of a sudden they're stacking up sixty hours a week all of a sudden, you know, and I, I, that's not where I'm coming from. I would like to not be in here all the time. I'd like to make it super efficient and every, and everything's getting done, and, um, you know, and that, so.
Eric?
All right, I'd like to bring up two things. I wanna start off first with, it's very nice to hear all the endorsements, whether it's public comment or the council, uh, uh, endorsement of Mr. Reddish and the mayor and the potential for conversation, that's great. Um, I think it's very important that this is referred to the Personnel Committee and that a, a very clear and concise job description is developed. Those are the academic and the administrative facts that have to happen. This particular item is the reason I'm here this evening. Um, I am a small business owner in town. I've got a Montana C Corporation, I've got three different limited liability companies. I peaked out last year with thirty-two employees, not forty, I currently have fourteen on payroll. The city of Phillipsburg is one of the smaller, one of the larger small businesses in town. If I'm not mistaken, what, seven full-time employees, a couple of part-time employees, one point three million dollar a year budget? Uh-huh. Some of the most tedious regulatory, uh, and administrative requirements to try to adhere to in terms of monitoring our water, not just the water we drink, but the water that goes down the creek out of the lagoons. And, and that the job of being an administrator and being a public works director and running a city are three different positions. And this town has been running without leadership for years. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Vukovich has been here for six years and seen twenty-two different city council members sitting behind that table. How many mayors?
Uh, three.
Four.
Four.
I'm the fourth.
And he's only been here six years.
This is my third administration, and I've only been here three years.
Bingo, okay.
You have the senior council member.
I'm a small business owner, I'm here to keep you guys in line.
You know, I mean-
And, and so what I'm saying is, I fully endorse what you're talking about, and I want you to take a hard look at the budget, and run, one way or the other, you need to find a way to afford it. And the best, you know, you know, like when I'm looking at my business, I always like to look five years back and ten years back. Okay, and, and the tenure thing would be ideal in this situation, because Mr. Vukovich has been here six, is you look at the number of employees, you look at what your payroll costs are. Obviously, public works are totally different when you do the standards fifty-fifty split for water and sewer, which is pretty much how the budget's been divvied up for years without actually looking at the actual numbers. Um, is that the town of Phillipsburg, and I, I played my hand earlier with the, with the government study commission being so short-sighted and not looking at the big picture, is the fact that running a community is a full-time job. And it's the job of the government to do for the people what the people can or will not do for themselves. And believe it or not, that's a full-time job. And you on the board now, irregardless of whether it's Mr. Reddish or not, need to set the framework to allow this town to move forward in a prosperous manner with fiscal responsibility. It bothers me greatly that what I pay in city taxes on the property I own here in Vanac County is more than what I pay in Grant County. And then you top it off with these huge water and sewer bills. So, um, you know, I want you to move wisely here, but I am confident out of a one point three million dollar budget, you can find the funding, and whether you wanna call him mayor or benevolent dictator or city manager, pick a form of government that will move us forward and solve these twenty-year-old sewer lagoon problems and these ten-year-old water treatment problems.
Exactly.
And I'm disappointed that there are not more members of both the council and the public here to hear my opinion.
It's been hard for us to get the public in.
I know, and the reason I'm here at this work session is because you get to expouse like this, and unfortunately, I will be missing the next couple of meetings due to business travel. So refer it to the committee and then let's bring it back.
Well, I'll keep you in line.
Yes, till we go to you, thank you, Eric.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, we'll, we'll pursue this through the Personnel Committee and then we'll move forward on it. I guess we'll make a, make arrangements to make a specific meeting for that and get it out there. Anything else?
This week would be good for that if you could, because I'm gonna be gone next week.
Okay, where are we, we're, Tuesday?
Yeah.
All right, so we would need a day notice.
Um, it would help if it could be like in the afternoon.
What does your schedule look like there, Mr. Johnson?
I don't know, I've got a little doctor tomorrow morning.
Friday, Friday would actually be a good day for me.
Would that work for you?
Rome wasn't built in a day.
Would that work in a week or two?
Probably.
Right.
Yeah, let's do something Friday. I don't know who else should on it.
Well, I'm sure Dan would like to be paid for all these hours he's put in, though. It keeps getting tabled and tabled and tabled, and that's just my opinion, you know?
Right, so here's another instance, uh, um, because of the changeover, obviously, in this council, we've established committees, probably five times in the last two years, and they, and then, you know, what happens is those people, they're gone. So, so even the, even the Personnel Committee is in service of the public here. I don't, I don't believe that I would, it would be righteous for me to sit in on that committee meeting since it's about the position that I'm going after. So, i- is there another person that would like to?
I'm not available Friday afternoon.
Would you be available, Mr. Johnson?
Don't know, probably not, Sharon's gonna have some surgery, so. But I can-
Nicole won't be back for-
I had that book from MSU, it's got job descriptions, evaluation forms that can scan and send to you.
Yeah, sure, that would be good.
And then, I don't know if, when does Reed, Reed's gone this whole week?
Monday, Monday.
If you, or maybe, or you could call Montana League of Cities and Towns and ask if they have on hand a job description for a mayor position.
Okay.
I will do that too.
See, then I'll be back on the first.
Okay, that's, that would be, let's figure, I'll figure this out tomorrow, and then I'll, I'll confer with you, and if we have to, if we push it back to the first, our next full meeting is on the sixth. So that might work. Um, Councilwoman Mel should be back, and I know that she'll wanna plug in, and that probably makes more sense.
Why don't we, why don't we do that?
All right. Okay, then we'll do that and we'll schedule it. Um, the last issue, or the second to last issue is sewer and water main policy. I don't know where you folks are at, at on that in terms of, have you looked at, um, any of the other policies for other towns? Mr. Bukinich and I had a short discussion about starting perhaps with our, as it stands now, when someone wants to do something on the property, we have one application process, which is, um, the utilities application.
Utility inspection.
The utility inspection application. So, uh, if we started with that, for example, uh, someone comes and they say, well, I bought this old house, or I bought this, this property, uh, I believe there's sewer on it, I don't know what the state of the sewer is, but I'd sure like to hook up. So, it would make sense for the town to say, we will look you up once the sewer line on your property has been hammered to make sure it's sufficient, in sufficient condition so that if we can hook it up to our existing sewer line. That, but that's just something that I'm thinking about as far as starting somewhere and adding to that utility, uh, application process. I mean, this is, there's a lot of complicated stuff going on here, and I, and I guess it boils back down to doing the homework and looking at other processes out there for other towns, high-grading what's practical, that would work for us, and discarding the other stuff that wouldn't work for us, and putting together, again, just an objective application, um, policy. And I, and I'd like to say that, oh, we could do everything the same, but we can't. I mean, literally, we can't, because there are situations here where, um, maybe someone wants to attach to water and sewer, maybe there's water on either side, then all of a sudden you attach them, and these folks have less water pressure, there's some complicated things going on here. So, I don't know, in terms of conversation right now, I just opened the floor up to get people's, um, opinions and attitudes about how we wanna start this and what direction we might wanna go.
The Spring, the, we'll hand out on Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that one. It's very simple and it covers, you know, extension, water, sewer, main size, main length, location, uh-
That was the one I referenced.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's simple, but I think, you know, my limited, you know, education on this, it covers everything except wells.
And is that a two-pager?
Yeah, two-page compared to the other one, which is very extensive in a large city.
Right.
But, yeah.
Is that an evaluation of existing additions?
It is an application for water and sewer main extension.
It's, it's important that you use that word evaluation, because you know where I'm going with this, and that is that if, if someone, a realtor comes in here and he says, hey, I've got this person who's looking at these three lots, what's it going to take to get that water and sewer? We have to establish, we don't know, basically, until we, there's a number of factors here that we have to go determine, wh- what part of town is in, what's the, what's the existing sewer and water in the general neighborhood, um, a- all these things. In the process, we're gonna have to be able to say, we need to give you an evaluation about what the possibilities are. Is this gonna be conventional? Are there new mains in there within a reasonable distance? Or is this a part of town that is just completely shot, to our knowledge? There's certain things that we don't know, but to the degree that we're capable of doing it, we need to have a process that we, when those folks come in, we can say, okay, you're two hundred and fifty feet from this main, you need to use this size pipe, you, this is, this is an estimate about how much it's gonna cost, and be able to give these folks an evaluation that, so that they can work from that. That's, I guess that's a little bit, that would be an advance of this.
Yeah.
Advance of actually filling it out and doing that sort of thing. We'd have to be able to, to, to the degree that it's ca, we're capable of doing that with the knowledge that we have, we have to set a policy. And right now, a realtor came in, was inquiring about some lots up by North Sutter, and I started the process with Mr. Bukinich, I asked him what he knew about it, asked the crew what they knew about it. They went and took some measurements and looked at possibilities. And so we, in fact, have what I'm describing right now in real time, we're, we're, we're beginning that process right now.
Well, I might add to the works too, when somebody comes into town hall and they, you know, approach Reed or I, you know, we need to know what our procedure is too. Do we refer you to the mayor, do we refer him to John, do we just have him fill out an application? I mean, we need to have that piece.
Personally, I, in the policy, I would want it to come to the mayor.
I'm just saying that piece should be added to, you know?
Right, the mayor, well, no, then the mayor makes the phone call and sits down with public works director and says, here, this is what's on the docket.
Well, that's fine, just so long as Reed and I know.
I, I, it's either that or the ma- Either that or it goes directly to the public works director, who in turn calls the mayor up immediately and says, hey, this is pending.
And, Daniel, you and I had this conversation, and the scenario I brought up was, we've all stayed in hotels. You can't, hotel chains do not just haphazardly add rooms onto a hotel without having some kind of additional reservoir for the water for those rooms. Otherwise, you short everybody along the line with water and sewer. It, it's that simple, and that doesn't have to be complex, you just have to have that idea in your head that, yeah, we've got six people already on this line, we can't take ten more.
So in that particular scenario, it might be a situation where you would say, there's a main within three hundred feet, but that main is completely maxed out. So in this particular point, unfortunately for you, perhaps you need to go thirteen hundred feet to this next main, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, is that, does that sound like a scenario?
Or you upsize the main that's there.
Right, that's another scenario. Um, and you, when you're upsizing the main that's there, you give everybody else, it's a piece of that benefit in a sense?
Well, they do, in as, in as much as they don't lose water by the folks, by the new folks coming to town.
Right.
And it, it's, it's also remember, you have to remember that our water mains are a reservoir in town. The water is there for everybody to use, it's just plain and simple, it's there. And, um, we, we have to maintain that size of reservoir, if you will, um, to allow that to happen, to allow our current residents to have the same amount of water that they've always had.
John, our existing code book describes sewer and water permits. Do you actually, did you learn those?
No. That's-
See, that was the other thing I wanted to reference too, is what do we have that's existing in terms of both ordinances and resolutions? So, I, I mean, I've been going through the ordinance book, and there's things in there that are required of the mayor that have never been done, to my knowledge, that I've just begun to do. So, I guess in terms of, uh, fleshing this thing out, we should go, we should go to there right away, Steve. What, what, what's the town obligated to do via ordinance?
Well, well, you know, we're, we're only obligated, what we wanna obligate ourselves to do is our code book.
Right.
And if we wanna change it, we can do it. And, and there's no sense in having it if we don't look at it and abide by it.
Enforce, repeal, amend, that's my deal with that stuff, so.
Do you have any objection if John looks at this?
No.
You know?
In, in note, yeah, note, redline it, note it up, um- Yeah, note, redline it, note it up. Um, I'll, have you seen that one? Okay, have you?
I don't know.
Okay, well, we'll make sure we get copies to you. Because of the one, all the ones I looked at, which was probably a half a dozen of them, that one, I agree, seemed the most, the base, most basic one.
To extent.
Right.
John, you must be familiar with what's in the code book. I'm sure you must have looked at it once or twice.
Yeah.
Would you be able to lend your, a level of expertise to us in regards to your thoughts on what is existing?
Absolutely, yeah.
I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
Give us a place to start in, because there are a lot of sections in there that describe certain responsibilities, um, that are non-existent. In regards to old pipe connections and cost of hookup and pipe size and sewer reg, regulations and sewer permits and engineering permits and maintenance of water meters and monthly fees and the whole thing. There's a whole section on sewer and water.
Is, does this sound like we, we need to move this into the Sewer and Water Committee to do the basic, base legwork on this? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay, so, we will schedule Sewer and Water Committee meeting. Um, let me get my mind around this in the morning and then I'll make the phone calls to the folks and we'll look at the, we'll look at the, uh...
That would be you and Ian, Brad and Blue.
Right, you and the former mayor. So we need to, we, again, we need to pluck somebody in, another person into this committee.
Yeah.
So please.
Perhaps that guy sitting right to the...
Please raise your hand if you would consider doing that.
Eventually down the road, yes, sir.
Okay.
I found a three-ring binder with everything from Pacha in there. Isn't that amazing?
Yes, sir, I'll buy you another binder.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll talk with you tomorrow, Dwayne, and then I'll, I'll, I'll talk with you and we'll figure out something here in a, in a short time period. Um, you know, I, like I said, our next meeting is on the sixth of February. Um, it would be good to have something done before that in terms of a conversation that we might have and, and starting to flesh this thing out a little bit better. And then we would bring John in on the meeting also. Um, we would just schedule it. And I'm not opposed to scheduling it. I, I mean, I'm open in terms of time of the day or in the evening or whatever, so we'll have that conversation and figure out what works best.
When do you see resolution for the request for one-third payment for the line?
That's a, that's a decision that has to be made by the council at the very sixth. So everybody has, has the record, the requisite information on that, of all their seats, of the claim. Uh, I think I've spoken with everyone and given you my attitude about it. Um, and we, I, I wanna put this to bed and I wanna make sure that the gray area in this process is not repeated, which brings us, full circle to what we're talking about right now.
Exactly.
Right? We're gonna remove the subjectivity out of it to the degree that's possible and have an objective, uh, process that's reflected in the application and so forth. So, um, I'm hoping that we get this rectified and that we move forward from this. Okay. Um, one last item we have tonight. Uh, I, I might defer to, to, to our clerk here on this who can give you maybe a little bit more insight into it. Occasionally, we get bounced check, whether it's for water and sewer or what have you. The process has been such that the bank charges the person who bounced the check and the, and us, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And that charge is eight dollars, am I correct?
That's what our bank is charging us.
Okay.
I mean, that's what the bank, Town Hall's bank, that's what they charge us is eight dollars. However, you know, most companies charge you twenty-five to thirty dollars for a bounced check. And the reason they do that is because it takes time for Reed or I to go in, reverse the payment, write a letter, make a copy of the check, send it to them, you know, and, and we're not talking hours, of course, but it still takes time for us to do that.
What's Mr. Cooley say about bounced checks?
Twenty-five bucks.
Again.
I think that's pretty standard. I mean...
Twenty-five to thirty is pretty much standard.
Okay, so, I, this is another, I believe this is another instance where there, to my knowledge, there hasn't been a written policy.
No, not that I know of.
And I, I think we bring right back to that policy, uh, that, that policy subject. And if, you know, we, we, we're not making a decision tonight, but mull it over in your mind and if this council determines that this is what we want the policy to be, then that's what we'll do. Um, as it stands now, as she indicated, we're, we're just charging the eight bucks because we're being charged the eight dollars.
Yeah, so we come out of it. Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
We'll put that on the agenda.
Okay.
Figure out, uh... Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments or concerns, good point that are up for discussion from the council? Um, any comments from the public?
Uh, just curious, I missed the last meeting. Uh, what was the council's, uh, perspective on the Zimmerman Road abandonment?
The, the, that was finalized, the, the, um, let's see, all the paperwork was done last week and some came out to, I think, the seven hundred and eighty bucks. Somewhere, somewhere between seven fifty and eight hundred bucks. It was five hundred for the closure and then the legal, the legals were, I believe, about two hundred and then there was, uh, the cost of the ads that were given to Mr. Zimmerman. Okay.
So if I were to figure out an equivalent dollar per square foot valuation plus the administrative fees, would the council be receptive to receiving a renewal of my request for abandonment adjacent to my property?
I, and again, here's, here's another, I'm glad you're bringing this up because we have a very preliminarily mocked-up resolution that addresses the process, right? Because, again, this was, there was no policy with this, right? Now, I, I, in a, in a perfect world, everything would be equal, but pieces of property are not equal, right? I mean, if you got something on the outskirts, that's, you know, where I'm going with this. So, I would definitely entertain a, opening the conversation up about that, again.
Perfect.
I don't know that it would be, you know, apples and apples here necessarily, considering they're two different pieces of property. However, I will say that there needs to be something to the degree that it's, makes sense and is consistent.
Mine is worth less than half as much on a dollar per square foot basis.
That, that more consistent. And we, and I can provide the, well, I don't know what good it would do at this point, but we will put this on the agenda also because I wanna develop a resolution that addresses exactly where you're coming from on this. And we, I had the attorney look at it and he, he mocked something up that isn't very detailed at this point. It's just the opening conversation.
So the city clerk would have those numbers available I could stop in and it's public information.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Because that will help me formulate.
Sure.
A proposal that would include actual dollar values.
Right.
So that's not ambiguous like it was, uh, last fall.
Okay, okay. As a matter, this is, this is interesting, coincidentally, because I just, I, I just opened up your stuff this afternoon when I was in here. I, I was going through some files and I, and I re-looked at that.
Throw it away?
So. No, I didn't throw it away.
You should have, because we'll start over.
Yeah, all right.
I'll start all over.
Okay.
All right.
Have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.